All right, it is now six thirty-one. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. It is now six thirty. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic-
For which it stands- One nation under God-
God indivisible- With liberty and justice for all-
For all. Before we call the roll again, we are faced with more gun violence in this country. Ladies and gentlemen, this is becoming such an ordinary occurrence. But I do hope that we keep the people, particularly the Capitol Police Officer, in our thoughts and prayers at this moment. So would you give me a moment of silence, please? Remembrance of those and the incident that happened in California. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Days-
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway-
Present.
Councilmember Fitch-
Here.
Councilmember Webb-
Here.
Councilmember Clancy-
Here.
Councilmember Tracus-
Present.
Councilmember Harder-
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The Journal of March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Sixth District.
See file of the subdivision plat be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Moving on to road and bridge matters. Item number one, Third District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works for review and recommendation.
So ordered.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three, Second District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number four, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number six.
So ordered.
Item number seven, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number eight.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number ten, Sixth District.
Receive, file, county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eleven, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number twelve.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply through number fifteen, and that will be the order.
Item number sixteen, Second District.
You're on mute.
Hi.
That's all right.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seventeen, Fourth District.
Receive, file, the bids be rejected, and the director of procurement be authorized to re-advertise for bids as recommended, and a copy of this be reported and sent to the interested parties.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number eighteen, Sixth District.
Receive, file, county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number nineteen, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number twenty, Third District.
Receive, file, and the reappointment be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number twenty-one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-two.
Receive and file, and refer to the county auditor, and that will be the order.
Thank you. Moving on to add-ons, item number one, First District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fitch.
Just, can we go back just for a second to item twenty-one? This is a communication from the county executive reference, making St. Louis County buildings more welcoming to all employees and community members. I was hoping he would be here this evening, so we could ask him questions about this executive order, where he's designated all restrooms in St. Louis County government buildings to be gender neutral. I had some questions about that. I don't know if others do. I would like an opportunity to have the county executive answer some questions in this format, so the public can hear his responses regarding that. For example, if we're going to make all those restrooms that are single-stall restrooms gender neutral, do they have locks on all the doors? Did he order that? It was not in his order for that. So I would have some questions for that, and my request would be is to leave this on our agenda for the next time he is here to be able to answer some of these questions. I don't know if other council members have the same concern. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you. This is one of those most rare occasions where I agree with Councilman Fitch. And I too would like to ask some questions of the county executive with respect to this order. So I agree with Councilman Fitch, and I'd ask that this matter stay on the agenda.
We can do, first of all, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm not sure if I understood Councilman Fitch correctly, but I did want to clarify. And if I misunderstood you, Councilman Fitch, I apologize. But this is just for single-stall restrooms. I would agree, and it's probably a best practice for all restrooms, regardless of the number of stalls, to have locks on them. But if you would like to, you know, hear from the county executive about that, so be it.
No, you didn't understand that, but I'm sorry, can I respond?
Yes, please.
I will tell you, I've worked in county facilities for thirty-five years. There are many single-stall restrooms without locks on the doors. And there are many multiple-stall restrooms that have no locks on the doors. I tell you, there are more do not than do, in my experience. So what I'd like to know from the county executive is if you're going to put down an executive order saying that anyone can use any of these restrooms, there has to be locks on the doors for those particular designated restrooms. That is just a clear safety issue. For those of you that were around when we had that horrible assault in the restrooms at Merrimack Community College several years ago, that's one example. So I just think it's something that the public needs to know if they're going to be using county facilities.
I think that, in a first discussion, first of all, we can leave that on the agenda at this particular time, and the, I'm sure the county executive will have some of his people listening on the call. And so at the next meeting, he needs to be prepared to respond to the questions that have been brought before us at that time. Is that sufficient, Councilman Fitch?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Chair. So your motion on that item would be to hold it on the order of business-
We will hold that on the order of business. That is correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now, where are we?
We are on public forum, Madam Chair.
All right. All right. How many speakers do we have this evening?
Five.
Five speakers. All right. Thank you very much. When your name is announced, listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking, then state your first and last name and your zip code for the record. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Jean Ferraro, followed by Ruth Banks.
I am from zip code six-three-zero-two-one in Baldwin. I am Vice President of Conservation for St. Louis Audubon Society, and speaking on behalf of that organization in support of the Lights Out Resolution introduced by Kelly Dunaway. This resolution is focused on reducing bird mortality in the St. Louis region by turning off exterior lighting during the high-intensity bird migration months of May and September. Scientists have estimated that collisions kill approximately five-hundred-and-ninety-nine million birds annually in the U.S. Many birds migrate at night, using the stars and the moon to navigate, and they become confused by bright lights and sky glow. They exhaust themselves and strike buildings in their path or land in areas that have other challenges. The St. Louis region sits beneath the Mississippi Flyway, which is the major migratory path for sixty percent of all songbirds and forty percent of waterfowl in the U.S. Because of this high concentration of migrating birds and the amount of light pollution in our area, St. Louis has been ranked as the fifth most dangerous city to migrating birds in the spring and the sixth most dangerous in the fall. But simple actions can make a real difference. Turning off exterior lighting of buildings could save birds energy and money. It's a win-win situation. I urge the St. Louis County Council to pass this resolution and support keeping birds safe by encouraging county businesses, organizations, and residents to turn off exterior lighting during May and September. I encourage the council to lead this region by example and consider partnering with the St. Louis Audubon Society and Lights Out Heartland to enroll county-owned buildings in the Lights Out campaign and make this area safer for birds. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruth Banks, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening, Honorable St. Louis County Councilmembers. My name is Ruth Banks. My zip code is six-three-one-four-six, District Two. Hello, Ms. Dunaway. I represent the National Council of Negro Women, Eartha Black, Rota Section of St. Louis, N C N W, and a new grassroots organization called Change and Action for Racial Equity Care. I am here seeking your support for final passage of substitute bill number one for bill number seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-one, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Webb. This bill regards non-discrimination provisions pertaining to hairstyles, specifically natural hairstyles worn by African-Americans. I am old enough to have lived through my culture's acceptance of wearing afros to now embracing natural styles such as braids, cornrows, curls, and locks. As African-Americans, we have had to adjust our hairstyle to fit an image of what corporate America deems professional. We've endured chemical treatments leading to bones and hair loss, trying to straighten hair just to fit an image that was not naturally ours. Often, moving up the corporate ladder meant changing one's hairstyle to fit in. Even in school environments, I have witnessed students being teased when they decided to no longer chemically treat their hair. Well, no more. I can't stand idly by and watch a student's self-esteem become deflated because someone doesn't think their natural hair is acceptable. With your help at this level, and hopefully with the passage of similar bills at the state and federal levels, we will see systems accepting people for what they have to offer and not based on how their hair is styled. I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share my feelings on hair discrimination and trust that you vote in favor of bill number one for bill number seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Gregory Porter.
Tom Sullivan, six-three-one-three-zero. I have a few things to mention. Councilwoman Days was in the news recently, along with Hazel Urby and others, complaining about the superintendent of Normandy Schools not being properly certified. While they claim to be concerned about the students, I would suggest they might take a trip over to Lulu Avenue, one block west of Normandy High School, to see all the trash piled up, in the streets, on the property, everywhere. St. Louis County Land Clearance Authority owns many of these properties and supposed to be cleaning up the mess. So far, it's hard to see if any progress has been made. Also, Councilwoman Days might also take a trip over to Kinlock. This city has become one giant trash dump, much worse than Lulu Avenue. I am sending council members a map put out by the U.S. Department of Agriculture that shows food deserts in St. Louis County. This should concern the council. At a town hall meeting held in Blackjack on July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, which was called by Rochelle Walton Gray with Sam Page and Rodney Crim in attendance, the second biggest complaint was the lack of grocery stores in many neighborhoods. This was after Shop and Save closed down. Rodney Crim said the Economic Development Partnership was working on the matter, but it seems they are not succeeding. The situation concerning county executive Page working a part-time job needs to be resolved, as this is a clear violation of the county charter. It is my belief that if Mr. Page continues to violate his oath of office, then his medical license should be revoked. Also, this situation does not speak well of Mercy Hospital, where the county executive presumably continues to work. The matter needs to be brought up to their board of directors. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Gregory Porter, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay, good. Yes, okay. Thank you. This is Greg Porter, zip code six-three-zero-three-three, unincorporated, North St. Louis County, District Four. I'm the chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee, which was established twenty years ago by a former precinct commander, Captain Robert Trittler, to address the problems that don't seem to go away. This committee has worked very closely over the last twenty years with the Problem Properties Unit to help address, clean up, and eradicate nuisance properties. In fact, this vital unit just last week helped get action on two problem properties that this committee had just reported to them. These are just two examples of the excellent work that this two-man unit does, and there's two of those two-man units in St. Louis County. Within the past hour and a half, you should have received my most recent reply to Chief Barton's response to me of last Friday about the future of the Problem Properties Unit. As you will see in reading the correspondence, there continues to be conflicting information on the part of the chief. As such, the time has come to cut to the chase and expose this issue to the public. It's apparent that Chief Barton and Lieutenant Colonel Brian Ludwig want to get rid of Problem Properties Officer Robert Rink. But in order to accomplish that objective, they need to eliminate his position and make him reapply for a new position that is virtually the same position. I see that the county executive is conveniently not here tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and read the following anyway that I had written. Back when Lieutenant Colonel Troy Doyle was vying to be the next chief of police for St. Louis County, county executive Page told Doyle that the police board does what he tells them to do. So if that's the case, Dr. Page, then I'm asking you to tell the police board to tell Chief Barton to leave the Problem Properties intact in its present state. Also, since the chief reports to the police board, perhaps it's time for a full housecleaning, starting with the appointment of a new chief and a new commander of the Division of Patrol. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley.
Hi, this is Suzanne Burley, six-three-one-two-three. First wanted to mention, you were talking about the bathroom stalls in some of the St. Louis County parks, at least in the ladies bathrooms. There's no doors at all. So when we're asking questions, I know that's on the agenda. If that's one that we could ask about how that's going to be handled, that would be great. Second thing, in-person council meetings. We haven't heard anything about that. We're still desperately hoping we can get these going again. Third thing, unfortunately, Dr. Page isn't on, because my question to him would be, whatever happened to Rochelle Walton Gray? From what I remember, she was supposed to be like our vaccines are. And then I saw some communication from Chairwoman Days, where she's introducing a resolution, or writing a resolution, that is specific to North County. And I'm wondering, because we're paying Rochelle Walton Gray a pretty big sum of money to represent the community. I think she was supposed to reach out to the North County people to help get the people in so that they would get the vaccine. So I'm wondering, where is she? Why are we paying her? So the other thing, vaccines in South County, I wanted to mention. We had three events. One of them was at Bernard Middle School. That one was scheduled by Jim Murphy and Governor Parsons, because we weren't getting attention until he actually got that scheduled. And then Ernie Tracus and Sam Page came out with two other locations in South County, which was great. That's three locations for South County, and it was a win-win for the people that want to be vaccinated. But what I'm curious about is I've heard for over a year that this is about saving lives. This is about the safety of the residents. And if that's the case, why did Sam Page and Ernie Tracus refuse to acknowledge the event at Bernard Middle School? Jim Murphy mentioned all three in South County. The other two, they wouldn't mention the Bernard Middle School one. I don't think that's showing much safety for the residents, because they were all three available and should have been mentioned. The other thing is the transparency on the three-point-one-million. How was that spent to the out-of-state consulting location? We have no invoices. It's been requested by a councilman. We should be able to see how that money was spent. That's our tax dollars. And it looks like I'm out of time, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that is all the speakers.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of you who decided to come and share your concerns with us. As a point of information, we are working very, very hard to return to in-person meetings. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, Councilwoman Harder and myself will be going to the chamber to see if we can figure out how the audio is supposed to be working, and we will move forward from that. But we are seriously, we are very serious about moving back into the chambers to take up our meetings again. So thank you all for that, and thank you for sharing the information with us. Introduction of bills.
Pursuing with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number ninety-six, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance appropriating and setting apart the amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, sixty-nine dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and appropriating and setting apart the amount of five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-eleven dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Park Maintenance Fund for support of debt service payments for special obligation bond Series Twenty-Twenty-One B related to the Police Precinct Project and the Green Felder Recreation Complex Project. Bill number ninety-seven, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a Missouri Justice Reinvestment Initiative grant of up to eleven-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the Missouri Justice Reinvestment Executive Oversight Council, appropriating the same for support of a process evaluation of the Twenty-First Judicial Circuit Court's Mental Health Court in compensation of temporary clerks, and authorizing the Director of Operations for the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept four grants totaling up to six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, appropriating the same for support of police functions related to drug trafficking, mitigation efforts, and authorizing the county executive and the superintendent of police to execute necessary documents. Bill number ninety-nine, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance amending Chapter Six Hundred, Title Six, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, nineteen-seventy-four, as amended, Public Health and Welfare by repealing and reenacting Section six-zero-zero-point-zero-six-zero pertaining to agreements for practicum students. Bill number one hundred, introduced by Councilmember Webb. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant a permanent easement on, over, and under a tract of county-owned land located in Spanish Lake Park to Spire Missouri Incorporated. Appropriating funds received as compensation for the granting of said easement and authorizing the county executive and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute necessary documents. Bill number one-oh-one, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three by repealing and reenacting Section One pertaining to temporary authority of the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to suspend or waive enforcement and application of certain provisions of Chapter One-oh-oh-three, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, nineteen-seventy-four, as amended, the zoning ordinance of St. Louis County, Missouri, and Title Eleven, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, nineteen-seventy-four, as amended, Public Works and Building Regulations as they relate to food establishments and businesses located in unincorporated St. Louis County, and temporary authority of the Director of the Department of Public Health to suspend or waive enforcement and application of certain provisions of Chapter Eight-oh-seven, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, nineteen-seventy-four, as amended, Food Code as they relate to food establishments located in St. Louis County and declaring an emergency. Bill number one-oh-two, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Tracus, and Harder. An ordinance amending Chapter One-oh-four, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, nineteen-seventy-four, as amended, Offices and Officers by adding and enacting a new section, one-oh-four-point-zero-six-five, pertaining to qualifications of the county auditor. And Bill number one-oh-three, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance by changing the boundaries of the C-eight planned commercial district and the C-three shopping district of certain land as provided herein, and repealing ordinance number twenty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight, P.C. zero-two-dash-two-one, Savoy Investments, LLC. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Moving on to perfection.
Bill number twenty. Pardon me, I lost my spot. Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to hold Bill number twenty.
Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number thirty-two, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold Bill number thirty-two.
Bill number thirty-two is held.
Bill number two-sixty-six, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill two-sixty-six.
Bill two-six-six is held.
Bill number two-sixty-seven, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill two-sixty-seven.
Bill number two-sixty-seven is held.
Bill number seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number seventy-five.
Bill number seventy-five is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I will be holding substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-seven.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-seven is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Madam Chair, if we may have a moment. This bill and the next three is you-
This bill and the next three, as you know, pertain to the retention of outside counsel for current litigation against the county. As such, they are, time is of the essence with respect to these bills and this issue. So I would just ask when the chairwoman might expect to be holding, committing the hold on, on this issue in these four bills.
Councilman Trachis, the Chair is moving as expeditiously as we can to make this happen. Of course, we have to get the requisite number of members, and that's what we're trying to do at this, at this time. So as soon as we can possibly get the members together, we will be having a committee of the whole.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. With that, I move to hold Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-seven. I'm sorry, wrong spot. Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-four.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-four is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to hold Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-five.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-five is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-six.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-six is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to hold Bill Number, I'm sorry, Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-seven.
Bill, Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Eighty-seven is held.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Bill Number Eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill Number Eighty-eight.
Bill Number Eighty-eight is held.
Bill Number Eighty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill Number Eighty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number Eighty-nine is perfected.
Bill Number Ninety, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number Ninety. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number Ninety is perfected.
Bill Number Ninety-one, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number Ninety-one. Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number Ninety-one is perfected.
Bill Number Ninety-two, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number Ninety-two. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number Ninety-two is perfected.
Bill Number Ninety-three, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number Ninety-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number Ninety-three is perfected.
Bill Number Ninety-four, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number Ninety-four. Is there a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number Ninety-four is perfected.
Bill Number Ninety-five, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number Ninety-five.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number Ninety-five is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, I would like to move to enact Rule Number Nineteen to suspend Rule Six in order to advance Bill Number One-Oh-Two to the perfection order of business.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and what is that bill number again?
One-Oh-Two.
One-Oh-Two. Bill Number One-Oh-Two is advanced to the perfection order of business. Councilwoman Clancy, is that it?
Yes, please read the bill for perfection.
So you are moving to perfect Bill Number One-Oh-Two?
Yes. But I believe the clerk has to read it first.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number One-Oh-Two, introduced by Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, so this is the bill that was introduced tonight pertaining to the qualifications of the St. Louis County Auditor. I would like to note that Councilwoman Webb is also a co-sponsor of the bill, and she joins the rest of us on the council cosponsoring this. What this bill does is it adds to the training and experience requirements for our county auditor, as well as requires at least one of the following credentials. A CPA, a certified internal auditor, or a certified fraud examiner designation. And the council has come to consensus that one of those credentials, in combination with more experience and training, will better suit the needs of the county auditor's office at this time. So with that, I move to perfect Bill Number One-Oh-Two.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number One-Oh-Two is perfected.
And I move to advance Bill Number One-Oh-Two to take up on the final passage order of business.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Bill Number One-Oh-Two is advanced to the final passage order of business.
And Madam Clerk, please, yes, please read the, read the bill for final passage.
Thank you. Bill Number One-Oh-Two, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Trachis, and Harder.
And please add Webb to that.
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Webb, as well. Got it.
Councilwoman Clancy, did you move for final passage?
I do move, I do move for final passage of Bill One-Oh-Two.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
One moment. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number One-Oh-Two, there are seven ayes.
Very well. Bill Number One-Oh-Two is finally passed. Moving on to final passage.
Bill Number Three-Twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill Number Three-Twenty.
Bill Number Three-Twenty is held.
Bill Number Fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill Number Fourteen, please.
Bill Number Fourteen is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Move to hold Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six is held.
Bill Number Two-Twenty, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to hold Bill Number Two-Twenty.
Bill Number Two-Twenty is held.
Bill Number Sixty-nine, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Dunaway.
I move for final passage to Bill Number Sixty-nine.
Is there a second?
Again, Dunaway.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Sixty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Sixty-nine is finally passed.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Webb.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six. Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Trachis.
Thank you. I understand and appreciate the concerns expressed in this legislation. At the same time, I believe the county charter, existing county ordinances include ample anti-discrimination protections that include protection against discrimination based on hairstyle, protective hair, indoor natural and cultural hair texture, and style. Moreover, I believe the way the bill is written will create the impression of protected subclasses or categories, which, as I said, I already believe are covered under existing law. I fear these new subclasses or categories will be used to generate additional and unnecessary claims against the county. And for those reasons, Madam Chair, I cannot support the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
For Ruth Banks, and every woman like her, and everybody out there who just wants to be loved and accepted for who they are, it's an aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six, there are six ayes and one no.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-six is finally passed.
Bill Number Seventy-eight, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Seventy-eight. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Seventy-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Seventy-eight is finally passed.
Bill Number Seventy-nine, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Seventy-nine. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Seventy-nine, there are seven ayes.
Very well. Bill Number Seventy-nine is finally passed.
Bill Number Eighty, introduced by Councilmember, I'm sorry, introduced by Councilmember Clancy for Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Eighty.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Eighty, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Eighty is finally passed.
Bill Number Eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Eighty-one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Eighty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Eighty-one is finally passed.
Bill Number Eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Eighty-two.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Eighty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Eighty-two is finally passed.
Bill Number Eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Eighty-three.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Eighty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Eighty-three is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have seven resolutions this evening. Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, and Webb.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas anti-Asian racism and hate have long been a stain on our nation's history from the passage of the Page Act, or Chinese Exclusion Act, in the eighteen hundreds to the detention of over one-hundred-and-twenty thousand Japanese-Americans in internment camps during World War Two. And whereas inflammatory, xenophobic, and racist rhetoric targeting Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, has intensified during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, as was recognized in this council's previous resolution on May fifth, twenty-twenty. And whereas, unfortunately, subsequent to that resolution, the use of anti-Asian rhetoric has continued to intensify and be normalized, such that a member of Missouri's House of Representatives referred to COVID-nineteen as the quote "Chinese virus", end quote, during a House floor discussion. And whereas, hate crimes targeting Asian people in America's biggest cities increased one-hundred-and-fifty percent in twenty-twenty. And according to the Coalition Stop AAPI Hate, nearly three-thousand-eight-hundred hate-fueled incidents against the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community have been documented, documented in the United States since March twenty-twenty, a number the Coalition says is probably a fraction of the true number. And whereas, AAPI women were the targets of more than sixty-eight percent of documented reports of anti-Asian harassment and violence since the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas, as a country, state, and nation, we must address the intersection of racism, bigotry, xenophobia, and sexism that is impacting AAPI communities and other communities of color at the hands of white supremacy. And whereas, hatred and discrimination that target any part of our community constitute an attack on our entire community and must be condemned wherever and whenever they arise. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section One, the St. Louis County Council stands in solidarity with Asian-American and Pacific Islander, AAPI, residents, families, and businesses, and condemns anti-Asian hate, racism, and discrimination in all its forms. Section Two, the Council- Section Two, the council encourages all Saint Louis Countyans to condemn bias in all its forms, including anti-Asian bias, and to seek opportunities to experience and learn about cultures other than their own, review their practices that may contribute to systemic racism, and in these ways work to create a more welcoming, inclusive, anti-racist community. Further, the council calls on the governor and the Missouri State Legislature to declare racism the public health crisis that it is, and to dedicate public health resources to combating it. Section Three, the council stands in solidarity with the following organizations working to combat hate, racism, and bigotry in all of its forms within our community. The Mo Asian American Bar Association, Organization of Chinese Advocates, Asian American Pacific Islanders Advocates, Asian American Chamber of Commerce, Chinese Culture and Service Center, STL Vietnamese Community, Korean American Association, Japanese American Society of STL, Thai Community of Saint Louis, and Nepali Community of Saint Louis. Section Four, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the organizations listed in Section Three.
Thank you, Kevin. I move for adoption of Resolution Number One.
Is there a second?
Again, Dunaway.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Discussion. Councilmember Tracus.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tracus.
I understand and agree with the premise of this resolution. In fact, I very much wanted to support it. However, I believe the resolution is written, fails to accurately reflect what has been reported about the subject hate crimes, and who is committing these horrible acts. I also believe the resolution includes unnecessary and unwarranted invective and hyperbole that ferments division. We should be looking for ways to bring people together instead of driving the wedge between them deeper. For these reasons, I cannot support the resolution. My vote will be no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Fitch.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Tracus, twice tonight, we agreed. Just for the record. So, and Councilwoman Clancy, you and I have talked for the last several weeks, you pulled this from the agenda last week, and I was hoping that you would listen to some of what Councilman Tracus said and some of what I said to make this actually applicable to everybody. Because, I don't know if you're familiar, but the U.S. House, Congress, has a resolution pending, House Resolution One-Fifty-three on this very topic. And I think it states it very well. Be it resolved, the House Representative affirms that the United States stands united in condemning and denouncing any and all anti-Asian and Pacific Islander sentiment in any form, condemns all manifestations and expressions of racism and anti-Asian and Pacific Islander or ethnic intolerance, and it goes on and on. If our resolution tonight was written in that type of form, I would support it without question, but it's not. So because of that reason, I cannot support it either.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, you know, I listened to the feedback that Councilman Fitch and Councilman Tracus provided last week, but I think we have to be honest about some of the things that are going on in our community, and I know that that makes some people uncomfortable. Councilman Fitch explicitly shared with me that he had concerns about the phrase "white supremacy" in here. There is a piece of the resolution also that says we expressly condemn hatred in all of its forms, hate, racism, and discrimination in all of its forms. And I don't think we need to create a false choice here. This isn't an either-or, it's an and. And I think that taking out the words "white supremacy" sanitizes the experiences of our constituents and the discrimination they face daily, which might make some people more comfortable, but neglects the pain and suffering that exists among many in our community, Asian-American community, and other people of color. So after everything that has happened in our community, even within the last week, with the lack of justice for Luther Hall, I will not try to weaken a resolution denouncing discrimination and calling on the people of Saint Louis County to combat it in all of its forms. That is deeply, deeply concerning to me that we would consider changing it to do that. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Harder.
Chair. Yes, I will agree with Councilman Fitch and Councilman Tracus this evening on this, but you know, I also want to say that discrimination in any form is intolerable. And that's what this should have been about. This should have been about just discrimination in any form, any person, any group. And because when you start listing groups, you're going to miss somebody. And when you miss somebody, that makes it almost a permission slip because you missed them. So we've got to make sure that when we do this, that we condone racism and this type of activity for all people, and that we can live together or in harmony, instead of trying to put everybody with a title and a name and a group tied to this, because we're going to forget somebody along the way. So with that, I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number One, there are four ayes and three nos.
Thank you. The Resolution Number One is adopted.
Resolution Number Two this evening introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas Stephen Cruz is retiring after dutifully completing forty-five years of service as a law enforcement officer, and whereas Chief Cruz is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Course, the Missouri Highway Patrol Police Supervision School, and Linnanui University. And whereas, over the course of his career, Chief Cruz served the Missouri communities of Ballin, Florissant, Truesberry, Bowling Green, and Maplewood. And whereas, Chief Cruz served as the City of Maplewood's Chief of Police for the final twelve years of his commendable career. And whereas, under Chief Cruz's leadership, the Maplewood Police Department obtained the highest level of accreditation a law enforcement agency can receive through the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Incorporated. And whereas, during Chief Cruz's tenure, the Maplewood Police Department established a diverse workforce, instituted various community policing measures, and substantially increased participation in the Neighborhood Watch Program, the Saint Louis Area Night Out Against Crime, and the Business Watch Program. And whereas, it is appropriate for the council and all Saint Louis Countyans to pause and recognize a man so deeply committed to serving and protecting his community with integrity and professionalism. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses its sincere appreciation to Chief Stephen Cruz, congratulates him upon the occasion of his retirement as Chief of Police for the City of Maplewood, and wishes him the very best in his future endeavors. Section Two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Chief Stephen Cruz as a permanent token of the council's esteem.
Thank you, Kevin. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Two.
Is there a second?
Second, Tracus.
Discussion?
Yes. Council, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy.
I appreciate Councilman Fitch for putting this resolution on the agenda tonight to honor Chief Cruz. Not only is Maplewood in my district, but Maplewood, I am a proud Maplewood resident, and I have appreciated Chief Cruz's willingness to engage with the community on multiple occasions. I believe I first met him four or five years ago during a community meeting, and he's not afraid to engage in some touchy topics related to policing and public safety, and I appreciate his service, and I believe he will be missed by my neighbors and myself. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Two is adopted.
Resolution Number Three this evening introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Kevin, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas the Saint Louis Audubon Society, SLAS, in the Missouri chapter of the International Dark Sky Association, Dark Sky Missouri, aim to provide birds safe passage during migration periods by reducing light pollution, as well as building in glass collisions through the Lights-Out Heartland Campaign. And whereas, birds help with the control of pests, carrion regulation, pollination, and seed dispersal while adding beauty and connecting people to nature in the outdoors. And whereas, bird watching is an economic driver in the Saint Louis region and is a fun, relaxing, multi-generational, educational, and wellness activity for all. And whereas, a wide diversity of birds in Saint Louis County indicates a healthy environment. And whereas, most birds migrate at night, navigating by using the stars and moon, and can become disoriented by bright artificial light and sky glow, resulting in exhaustion or deadly collisions with buildings and glass. And whereas, collisions with buildings is one of the top causes for mortality of birds in the United States, with Saint Louis ranking as the fifth most dangerous city during spring migration, and the sixth most dangerous city during fall migration. And whereas, the Lights-Out Heartland Program strategy is aimed to persuade building owners and managers and homeowners to turn off exterior lighting on all buildings at night during the high migration intensity months of May and September. And whereas, these measures save energy and money and protect birds migrating to nesting and wintering grounds. And whereas, Saint Louis County joins the international community in cities including Minneapolis, Chicago, Kansas City, Indianapolis, Dallas, New York, and Toronto, in sponsoring lights-out projects to protect birds during migration. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the Saint Louis County Council supports reducing bird mortality in the area and encourages Saint Louis County businesses, organizations, and residents to turn off any exterior lighting during the high migration intensity months of May and September. The council further commits to working with other county officials to consider partnering with the SLAS in Dark Sky, Missouri to enroll county-owned or managed buildings in the Lights-Out Heartland Campaign. Section Two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to County Executive Sam Page, the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works, and Michael Meredith, Secretary of the Saint Louis Audubon Society.
Thank you so much, Kevin. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Three.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Three, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, Resolution Number Three is adopted.
Resolution Number Four this evening introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Thank you, Kevin. Once again, will you please read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Just Moms STL was founded in March two thousand and thirteen by a group of strong, determined moms, including Dawn Chapman, Karen Nickel, and Beth Strohmeier. And whereas, Just Moms STL's goal is to educate the community about the potential hazards and health risks associated with radioactive waste, which poses a threat to generations of residents in the North County community. And whereas, the group's tireless efforts have engaged local, state, and federal leaders and rallied the community to join their cause. And whereas, as a result of the group's advocacy, an amended record of decision was finally signed agreeing to the safe and timely removal of seventy percent of the radioactivity at the Westlake Landfill site. And whereas, the group has since expanded its outreach by helping other communities throughout the country that have been impacted by radioactive material lost or mishandled by the United States Department of Energy. And whereas, it is appropriate for the County Council and all Saint Louis County residents to pause and recognize a group of dedicated people committed to the health and well-being of their community and generations to come. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses its gratitude to Just Moms STL, its founders and their families for the tireless work on behalf of Saint Louis County, especially the North County community, and acknowledges the progress they have inspired. Section Two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Ms. Dawn Chapman, Ms. Karen Nickel, and Ms. Beth Strohmeier as permanent tokens of the council's esteem and admiration.
Thank you, Kevin. Before I move, I want to say that when I got to know Just Moms a few years ago, when I was introduced to them, I was told the story of how they got their name. And when they were looking into this terrible thing happening at the Westlake Landville, and people were encouraging them, "Well, stand up, do something." And they're like, "Well, what are we going to do? We're Just Moms." Well, Just Moms, you've done a heck of a lot for our community, and I couldn't be more proud. And with that, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Four.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Webb.
Roll call, please. It's all unknown.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Four, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, Resolution Number Four is adopted.
Resolution Number Five this evening introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Once again, Kevin, will you please read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas high school student Nathan Van Zeele was awarded the prestigious President's Volunteer Service Award for performing fifty volunteer hours with Lutheran Senior Services at Merrimack Bluffs Independent and Assisted Living, Merrimack Bluffs. And whereas, Nathan is a favorite of the residents at Merrimack Bluffs and is known for his energy and enthusiasm in all he does. And whereas, Nathan was honored for his service with a special dinner, bronze medal, lapel pin, and a certificate signed by the President of the United States. And whereas, this is the first time in the seventy-five-year history of Saint Louis Lutheran Senior Services that a volunteer for the organization received this award. And whereas, Nathan is homeschooled and a member of Beta Chi, an academic fraternity for high school students. And whereas, Nathan resides in Maryland Heights with his proud parents, Mark and Michelle Van Zeele. And whereas, Nathan plans to continue his commendable volunteerism in the Maryland Heights area. And whereas, Nathan looks forward to college and aspires to become an urban planner. And whereas, when a young person has demonstrated such dedication to serving his community, it is appropriate for the council and all Saint Louis Countyans to pause and take notice. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council congratulates Nathan and his family on the occasion of his receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award, and wishes Nathan well in all his future endeavors. Section Two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Nathan Van Zeele as a permanent token of the council's esteem and admiration.
Thank you so much, Nathan, and I'm forward to seeing what bright things you bring us. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Five.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Five, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, Resolution Number Five is adopted.
Resolution Number Six this evening introduced by Resolution number six this evening introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
Please read the resolution.
Yes sir. Resolution, whereas the City of St. Louis, City, has imposed a one percent earnings tax on all city residents and all non-residents who work inside the city limits, generating approximately one hundred and eighty million dollars in taxes, which amounts to more than one-third of the city's general revenue. And whereas, only seventeen states allow local jurisdictions to impose an earnings tax, and in Missouri, only Kansas City and the City of St. Louis have an earnings tax. And whereas, seventy-five percent of the city earnings tax is paid by non-residents of the city, many of whom live in St. Louis County. And whereas, St. Louis Treasurer Tashara Jones, who is a candidate for mayor, has publicly announced that St. Louis County should consider implementing an earnings tax for the entire county. And whereas, Treasurer Jones has suggested the earnings tax could be higher than the current rate, stating, quote, "The more you make, the more you pay," end quote. And has further suggested St. Louis County and the city could possibly use the Board of Freeholders process to implement the tax in St. Louis County. And whereas, St. Louis County Executive Sam Page has endorsed Tashara Jones for mayor. And whereas, an earnings tax in St. Louis County may drive businesses and residents out of the county into adjoining counties without such a tax. And whereas, additional taxes do not encourage economic growth in the region. Now therefore be it resolved by the St., by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council opposes any effort to implement any type of earnings tax in St. Louis County that does not include a direct vote of county voters. The council also encourages the City of St. Louis to work to eliminate its earnings tax to make the city more attractive to businesses and residents. Section two, the Administrative Director shall send certi- certified copies of this resolution to Leiter Crusen, Mayor of the City of St. Louis, Tashara Jones, Treasurer of the City of St. Louis, and the St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Kevin. I move for the adoption of Resolution number six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Uh, yeah, actually, I'm sorry. Yes, Madam Chair.
Let's go back. Councilwoman Clancy.
My apologies, I didn't get that in quick enough. Um, Councilman Fitch, are you aware that there was actually a statewide ballot measure in 2010 pertaining to this?
Yes, um, and it's, it recalls for a vote every five years, but the part that you're probably thinking about where it cannot be extended was not part of that.
Okay, I've gotten conflicting information, I've gotten conflicting information about that. From my understanding, that was passed in 2010. Um, and, you know, if that is in fact true, based on the information that I have, um, I'm not sure what the point of this is, because I believe that it, it was successful and that it barred any other jurisdiction from implementing an earnings tax without the vote of the people, as you suggest, so.
Yeah, it was discussed, but it was not part of the constitutional amendment.
Okay, all right. Well, there's, there's, um, I don't have time to, to, to check on that, but I will, I will be opposing this.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Madam Chair, on Resolution number six, there are five ayes and two noes.
Motion carries. Resolution number six is adopted.
And our final resolution this evening, Madam Chair, Resolution number seven introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Uh, please read the resolution.
Yes sir. Resolution, whereas Brandon Oglesby earned the rank of Eagle Scout on September twenty-third, 2020. And whereas, Brandon will receive an Eagle Scout Honor Cord at a ceremony on May twenty, 2021, at Paul A. Schroeder Park in Manchester, Missouri. And whereas, Brandon is a member of Troop Seven Five Zero and has earned forty-six merit badges. And whereas, for his Eagle project, Brandon installed five challenge coin shadow boxes at the Recreation Therapy Department of the Veterans Affairs St. Louis Medical Facility. And whereas, Brandon is the son of proud parents, Mr. Gregory Oglesby and Mrs. Susan Denise Oglesby. And whereas, Brandon's father describes Brandon as a very humble young man. And whereas, when a young person has been so dedicated to a goal and achieved a rank earned by so few Boy Scouts, it is appropriate for the council and the people of St. Louis County to pause and take note. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council congratulates Brandon, his family, and his troop members and leaders on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and wishes him well in all his future endeavors. Section two, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Brandon Oglesby as a permanent token of the council's esteem and admiration.
Thank you, Kevin, and congratulations, Brandon. Quite an accomplishment. I move for the adoption of Resolution number seven.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye. Congratulations.
Councilmember Trakus.
Yes, congratulations indeed, um, as an Eagle Scout, um, it's just a very incredible accomplishment. I'm, I'm proud of you, and, um, I'm sure that all of those forty-seven merit badges and your time earning that rank will pay huge dividends for the rest of your life. Congratulations, Brandon.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Congratulations, Brandon, on your job. Well done. All of the hard work well paid off, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Madam Chair, on Resolution number seven, there are seven ayes.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Resolution number seven is adopted, and I also want to send my congratulations to Brandon, uh, especially when we have our young man attain such a high level in the scouting, um, scouting arena, it is to be, um, con- uh, congratulated, and, uh, I wish you much, much success in the future. I think, Kevin, that's the last resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And if you will notice that there was a resolution earlier, uh, for the vaccine suppression that I had, uh, unfortunately, our legal, uh, um, um, support team could not get that in time, so that it was, um, a part of the agenda, but I did want to let you know that, uh, I'm going to hold that here, uh, and it is, uh, was to Mr. Dr. Khan, I believe he's a doctor, uh, in that the, the vaccinations and how they have been distributed, uh, leave a lot to be desired. We still do not have a plan, uh, for how that, the, uh, information is to be disseminated, and so that was all part of that resolution, but we will get to that. I believe, um, Ms. Dr. Khan is scheduled for a, uh, meeting very shortly, and so some of that information I will be addressing at that time. Moving on to unfinished business.
Yes ma'am, Chair. Item number one.
We will hold, uh, that on the order of business, and, um, hopefully we can get a committee of the whole as quickly as we possibly can, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Hold on the order of business, same motion for number three, and that will be the order. Do we have any new business this evening? Diane, for some reason, we cannot see you. I don't know if you're aware of that.
Yeah, I broke my camera. I don't know. I don't know what happened. I think I broke the camera. Um, we have no, no prepared orders this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other business to come before the council at this particular time? Councilman Trakus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to go back to public forum briefly, um, particularly the comments of Mr. Greg Porter regarding the Problem Properties Unit. I too have had direct conversations with the chief and was assured that no changes would be made to the Problem Properties Unit, and so, Mr. Porter's statement regarding, uh, proposed modifications to that unit caused me great concern. Um, that unit has been incredibly effective in District Six. Um, I can't praise them enough for their professionalism and their thoroughness, particularly Officer Rink. So, the idea that somehow this whole thing is being orchestrated to remove Officer Rink is, is very troubling to me, and, um, I intend to look into it. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to the attention, because I know, um, certainly in North County, the Problem Properties Unit is important as well, and, uh, it's very, very, uh, troubling to me that there's even modification that in, in what is an effective operation is being considered. So, I, I will look into it further, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And thank you, uh, Councilman Trakus. I too have had concerns and conversation. The chief actually called, uh, uh, I guess she returned my call, uh, today, and, uh, of course, it was close to, uh, um, the meeting time. I have not had an opportunity to talk to her. Perhaps you and I could talk to her at the same time.
Yes.
I do know that there are three positions, uh, in the North County area, and only one is filled, so that creates a major problem for, uh, the first and the fourth, and we do have considerable challenges in that area. So, uh, our next conversation, then, we will include you as well as Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Webb, in that conversation with the chief. So, thank you so much for that.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Um, as you both expressed your concern about the Problem Properties Unit, I too had an opportunity to speak with the chief today, and, uh, I had no knowledge about, uh, Mr. Officer Rink, and I don't know how that falls into this. One of my great concerns is that the Problem Properties, as our community is changing, and we need that support, we need other resolution, other solutions as well. And so, finding, uh, members of our community when they don't have, um, the resources to take care of the fines and just compounding it is not, should not be our only solution. And so, I was speaking with not only the chief, but other members of leadership to say, one of their goals with this new community outreach is to find other solutions to solve these Problem Properties, to provide funding, provide other, uh, entities that can solve some of the, whether it's a roofing issue, or if it's a siding issue, or it's removing or brushing trees that are overgrown, finding a way to help them resolve the issues and not just compound it with a, with another fine. And so, again, I want to work with you as my colleagues, uh, Councilman Trakus and Madam Chair, Mrs. Days, to make sure that we get a full holistic approach to this new unit, and that it will be for the best of the community. Madam Chair, I do have two more announcements, so if you would, uh, allow me.
I want to indulge you. Continue on, Councilwoman Webb.
As you spoke of, uh, your resolutions about the COVID ex, uh, outreach and how that's been executed, there is on Thursday, a Health, Justice Health and Welfare Committee meeting at four PM, I'm sorry, four thirty, to address the actual COVID vaccination program and the outreach. For our, uh, panelists, the singles panelists, we will have Dr. Khan there, um, and then his deputy, Ms. Spring. Uh, there will not be represents, a representative from the outreach committee directly, but they have helped brief Dr. Khan, so he will be prepared to address all of our questions. In addition to the Justice Health and Welfare Committee meeting at four thirty, there will also be a six PM, uh, co-host town hall meeting with myself and, uh, Madam Chair, Rida Days, for, uh, with the assessor, County Assessor Jake Zimmerman. We will be there to explain the real estate assessment process and in, address any questions that our residents may have as they are receiving their new assessments. And so, Thursday will be very busy, but I hope all make time to be able to be engaged and informed on these very two important topics. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Webb. Any, uh, Councilman Harder?
Yes, um, just want to make an announcement. Tomorrow night, uh, in my district, and also on the border between, uh, District Three and District Seven is Baxter Road, and there's a, uh, town hall meeting about that with the Transportation Department, and that will also be virtually, and it will, the link is on the Baldwin website, it's also on the Manchester website and St. Louis County's website, uh, to talk about the improvements to that road. And so, if you're a resident and listening in, uh, that would be a great opportunity to learn more about this project and, uh, what it's going to look like at the end. So, that's at six thirty, uh, tomorrow night on, uh, virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harder. Any further announcements, uh, Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, also to announce, a, an assessor town hall meeting for District Three and District Seven, uh, will be on Monday at six PM, and all of that information is on the County Council website on how to join that.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Clancy.
Sorry, one thing I wanted to sneak in at the end here, um, uh, regarding COVID and vaccinations, um, we did get an important request, all of us did, from Dr. Khan today, and I wanted to amplify that for the public. Um, Dr. Khan wanted us all to help share that the FEMA vaccines through the dome are, um, open to St. Louis County residents. They are happening now through April thirteenth, seven days a week, from eight AM to six PM. Dr. Khan did say, um, that we should register through the state, so, um, even if you've already registered with St. Louis County, and you can go to the COVID, uh, the COVID Missouri Vaccine Navigator online to register, there is a special event code, eight five one eight six. I understand that not everyone has internet access. If my office can assist you with getting registered, please give my office a call directly at three one four six one five five four four one. Um, and Dr. Khan also is awaiting action from the council on his official appointment, so I understand he's coming to talk to us on Thursday, but I hope that we can have a committee hearing with him, um, post haste, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion, announcements? Anything for the greater good?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Meeting adjourned. Stay safe. Thank you.